It is now 7:00 PM. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025 Town Council Meeting. Our meeting this evening will be broadcast live on the Town of Double Oak YouTube channel. Once on the channel, click on the "Live" button. Out of respect for all those in attendance, please refrain from talking to other members of the audience during the meeting and silence electronic devices while in the Cook-Wilkinson Community Government Room, please. I'm going to go ahead and ask the Town Secretary Lynn Jones to call the roll.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wellen?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Dietrich?
Here.
Mr. Gortney?
Here.
Dr. Kay?
Here.
Ms. Robertson?
Here.
We have one.
Thank you. Councilperson Rivera will now lead us in an invocation.
Dear Father in Heaven, we're so very grateful for this day that we get to gather together and discuss the needs of our town. Please help us to make wise decisions and for the best interests of our town and our citizens. Help us to think about all the different things that we need to in making these decisions and help us to all be professional and cordial in this attempt as well. Father, we're so grateful for all these great blessings. We ask that you please watch over our volunteer fire department and our police department and all of our citizens in this town and help us to just be the best town that in all the whole country. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, Amen.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Dietrich will now lead us in the pledges. Please rise.
A pledge reads as follows. To the flag of the United States of America, the civil republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored with Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
We have some special guests this evening. I would like to have Janelle and Viviana Ikorn, as well as Mark Bryant, please come up to the podium. So annually each year, Denton County recognizes the United Way Foundation for all of the amazing work they do here in the county. And the town has always taken advantage of that in terms of doing a proclamation just like other towns do proclamations as well. So I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation for United Way of Denton County from the Town of Double Oak. So whereas United Way of Denton County improves lives by mobilizing communities like Double Oak to action so all can thrive, and whereas united is the way, united is the way we create a healthy Denton County community with strength and resilience, wellness, and financial security where everyone regardless of age has the opportunity to flourish. Whereas by working together to create solutions to people's most pressing challenges, United Way of Denton County positively impacts the lives of over 54,000 local residents annually. Whereas the United Way of Denton County leads the effort with a network of nonprofits, governments, businesses, and donors to respond to our neighbors' immediate needs and seek out better solutions for larger community-wide issues. Now therefore, we declare September 2025 as United Is The Way Month and proudly join United Way of Denton County in calling on all residents of Double Oak to give to one to impact many as we take action to create a future where everyone has the chance to thrive. So congratulations to United Way. Appreciate you all coming out here tonight. They do such a great job and we appreciate it. So before we start this evening, I'd like to establish some ground rules. It's the same stuff that I've mentioned before in just about every meeting. To ensure our meeting is efficient and concise, each council member and citizen will have a maximum of three minutes for their comments, questions, and answers. And I did say councilmen, councilpeople, and citizens. When recognized to speak, councilmembers will proceed in an orderly fashion, one question per member. Before moving on to next, the total time allotted for any Q&amp;A session or agenda item will be capped at 15 minutes except for the budget, which is an open discussion in terms of the council. So moving on then to item two, citizen comments, non-agenda subjects. The Town Council welcomes and values citizen input. A portion of each meeting is set aside for comments on non-agenda items, which means topics not listed on the meeting agenda. If your comments relate to an agenda item, you will have the opportunity to speak when that item comes up when recognized by the presiding officer. Please step to the lectern and state your name and address for the record. Each citizen has up to three minutes to speak. Councilmembers will listen closely, but they will not respond or enter into discussion during this time. This is a procedural rule designed to allow everyone a fair chance to be heard and to keep the meeting moving forward. Please also know that all meetings, including citizen comments, are recorded as part of the town's official record. We ask that all comments be respectful and orderly. Personal attacks, profanity, and disruptive behavior are not allowed. If rules of conduct are violated, the presiding officer may call the speaker to order, issue a warning, or require the individual to leave. If necessary, law enforcement may be asked to... I don't see that ever happening. But these guidelines are in place to ensure every citizen has the opportunity to speak in a fair, respectful environment at the Town Council meetings. We have, I think we have five people on the non-agenda items this evening. I'm just going to go ahead like I always do and call them in the order that they signed up. So Joanne Meyer, please come to the podium and identify yourself and your address, please.
Oh. I've done this before. Wait a minute. There we go. Joanne Meyer, 170 Park Lane, 36 years here, two children and four grandchildren, and in two years, all of them will have graduated from Marcus High School. So it's to say that I am proud to say these are where my roots are. I wasn't born here, but Double Oak is where my roots are, our roots are. I want to just let y'all know, or let the people know?
Yeah, please speak to the council, please.
What this council has done to help our town. From the very beginning, they all started, they all tried to improve and make needed changes and make everything healthy and in a good environment. First off, an office procedure manual was set up. IT software improved and website updated. A professional city manager was hired. The secretary's job was defined. Police chief position was open to have a qualified person. These are just a few things amongst a lot of other things that we all have know, maybe know, and many of you may not. Coming to a meeting to ask questions, to show your grievances, or to play gotcha is just that. Go to the mayor, city manager, or the councilperson and ask, what can I do to help? Double Oak is about helping each other, like gift cards when a tragedy happens. Go to a funeral of a town member. Bring food when there is an illness or accident. Do you know we had Friends of the Family meeting right here in this town hall about domestic violence? We've also organized the 50th birthday party, Fourth of July parade, Christmas tree lighting, and Easter egg hunt, and many, many other things that this whole town involved themselves in to make happen. Double Oak is like a fishbowl. I feel like it's like swimming around, passing cars and houses, waving at friends and neighbors. There are people looking in the bowl from outside. What do you want them to see and think about our town?
Thank you.
Thomas Meyer, 170 Park Lane, Double Oak, Texas. I come before you tonight to say, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago that involved the zoning and planning committee. We all know what it was about, and I just want to say I've never seen a meeting run as well as that planning meeting was run. Everybody was given a chance to talk, whether you were pro or con, and there was no, I'll just use the word badmouthing of anything anybody said. And I just want to say this. I was on the zoning and planning committee a couple of years ago as an alternate, and I watched how things were done. And it was done very, very proactive. I never participated on the chair, but I came to the meetings. And I just want everybody to know that when something comes to the zoning and planning committee, the things that I learned, it comes from the outside within. It doesn't come through the mayor. The zoning and planning committee is here to evaluate and plan the things that are going to happen in our town. And then once it's planned and they make a decision, then it comes to the city council. And I just want everybody to know the mayor has nothing to do with any part of that. So I just want everybody to know that, and I want to commend that meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, how great it was done and for a job well done to those people. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Burns?
Brian Burns, 125 Willow Court. And this is my Double Oak Citizens Report. Each Town Council meeting, I'll come before you and present what I think were good things that occurred at the previous Town Council meeting, bad things such as potential ordinance violations, incomplete items, items that have been brought before you that the town's still waiting for a response on, and then a running tally of possible violations. So with my inaugural report, the good is that Councilwoman Wellen responded to my August 22nd email inquiring about town business being conducted over personal email accounts. She agreed to look into the matter, so the town is looking forward to a response on what will be done about personal email addresses being used specifically by committee members for town council business. The bad, Councilman Mike Gortney made disparaging remarks and cast false accusations against the citizens of Double Oak at the August 18th, 2025 Town Council meeting. This is marked at the two-hour and 45-minute mark of the official recording. Mayor Pat Johnson did not enforce the rules of procedure despite this being a violation of decorum. Such actions erode trust between elected officials and the citizens they serve and have been reported and will also be reported to Town Secretary for inclusion in the official town record. Incomplete items, we are still waiting for some kind of an update on what's going on at the fence at 250 Simmons, which is in violation of ordinance 3.301. Despite multiple citizen emails, record requests, a formal inquiry, there's yet been any substantive response from any of you about this matter. And the matter is not going away. People are still asking questions, what's going on? Why are you not enforcing the ordinance? Resolution on decorum, transparency, and respect submitted August 16th and verbally requested at the August 18th meeting. Mayor Johnson denied allowing this to be even on discussion for agenda items. And this is interesting because in February 2024, you yourself put out a one-page statement stating that the Town Council will be acting with decorum. What we see at these meetings violates that. Unfulfilled planning and zoning seats. Every Friday, you say we have openings, yet there have been four to five qualified applications that have been on file since June. No updates on that, but you keep asking for more people. What about the people who applied? And in town business over personal email, that's been moved to incomplete because we haven't had an update on that yet. So the running tally in why this matters, to build accountability, the citizens' report will track possible ordinance procedural or decorum violations. This is not a legal judgment, but a record of concerns for accountability. So for those keeping score at home, right now I have Mayor Johnson with one possible violation and Councilman Gortney with one possible violation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie Morrow, 105 North Forest Lane. I've listened closely to the recent wave of negative comments directed at our mayor and councilmembers, particularly regarding the helipad and the property at 250 Simmons. It's astonishing how quickly misinformation and half-truths can spiral. Just a few voices can ignite a storm and how others without seeking full context can pick up the torch and keep the outrage burning long after the matter supposedly has been resolved. Mayor Johnson has ushered in a new era of accountability. Our town operates with clear procedures and business-minded approach, not on the good old boy network or make decisions based on relationship or emotions. It runs on facts, fairness, and respect for the citizens of Double Oak. What's often overlooked in these moments is the dedication and the hard work that our officials pour into this town. The hours that they spend preparing for meetings, doing research, making decisions in the best interest of Double Oak deserve recognition. These roles are not easy, and they certainly aren't thankless, at least they shouldn't be. In light of this, I encourage every citizen not to ask what's wrong or tell us how bad we're doing, but how they can help instead of giving weight or false accusations and untruth. Let's focus on how we can contribute to the continued success of our city, whether it's through volunteering, attending meetings, or simply staying informed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Johnson, 164 Spark Drive. Just a quick announcement for the upcoming Double Oak Women's Club meeting. The first one will be on September the 16th at 7:00 PM here at the Town Hall, so I just want to make sure and mention that. We're starting our new year coming up and just wanted to remind and encourage ladies within the community, young and old, all ages are welcome. During the month of September, we'll be either via a walkabout to the homes or possibly a direct mail piece. Want to get the word out regarding the Double Oak Women's Club, certainly what we do in terms of contributing to our community in a variety of ways, whether it's the volunteer fire department, various scholarships to the high schools, a lot of improvements within the community, or just personally from a woman's perspective, how we can help each other with all types of needs within our community. So just wanted to, just a quick PDA announcement for the Double Oak Women's Club. Hope we can see everybody on September the 16th. Thanks.
Thank you. Katie Groat?
Katie Groat, 165 Double Oaks Drive. I just want to take a moment this evening to thank our Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department and EMS, along with Flower Mounds. I've had to unfortunately call them two times in the last three months. When I went my first 45 years of life, I never called 911 once. I know the telephone number now. Anyway, they've been fabulous in helping me with my young son who's having some medical issues with seizures and learning how to figure them out. So again, I don't know, I don't know y'all's budgets. I don't know how all that works yet, but I do want to say they have been very helpful from an outsider's, I mean, from a person who has utilized them the last three months. Finally, I just also would like to see if we can maybe expedite the helipad ordinance. I don't know to get that on the agenda. I've been told there's a couple of ways to do it. Either the mayor can do it or two councilpeople can do it. But, and I too want to get on the ordinance committee. But I don't know, that's just something I wish I would think about, maybe expediting that in the steps of different ordinances we need to look at. Thank you.
All right, we move on to item three, consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the Town Council, will be enacted on by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests, in which the event of the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Information concerning consent agenda items is available for public review. Council, we have one item. It's discussed, consider, and act on the minutes of August 18th, 2025 meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes, council?
No corrections. No.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item?
I move to approve the consent agenda items as written.
Is there a second? Second. All right. We have a motion by Councilperson Robertson and a second by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Dietrich. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
Dr. Kay?
Aye.
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
All right. The consent agenda passes. Thank you. Moving on to item four, mayor, council members, and staff reports. I'll start on my right tonight.
I was already. Go ahead.
Okay, then I'm going to go to my left. So go ahead, go ahead.
All right. Just wanted to give a short update. I did meet with the ordinance committee to review a few items.
Great write-up, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you. There is, we will publish, I guess, the notes of our meeting. But very good discussion. We are out of compliance with some of the laws in Texas that we're addressing immediately, some of which we're going to default to the Texas limits. We will also be addressing a few others and getting some more feedback. So very much appreciate the time from Bree Hancock and Karen Smith, and they have action items. We're working very hard on these. So it's a pretty robust list of some non-compliance. The noise ordinance and aerial, we're doing some research on what's legal for slash helipad, slash other noise ordinance. We're also looking at rental, short-term rental properties, which also came up as a city tax requirement. So if you're Airbnb-ing your house, we're going to probably come after you. And then a few other adjustments to term limits. The council meetings had a request ad hocs and the frequency, and we're extending the posting requirements, so you guys will have the agenda a little early. So we're working on those. We'll have some drafts. They do have to be written with our legal approval and in the right way, so it's not sitting on it. I've heard you, and we've had our meeting, so we'll keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, the ordinances has to be done in a specific way in order to meet all of the Texas, and we have a lot of ordinances that we aren't even in compliance with what's changed over the past three years for sure. And so we're trying to get those addressed as quickly as we can to get back in compliance. So I love the update. It was great. Thank you. Dr. Kay?
Nothing. I've got nothing.
All right.
I got nothing.
Mark?
The only thing I have is we're working with Chris on replacing some of the laptops, but that's going to be discussed later on today, so I don't need to go into that. But seems like a pretty good deal.
Mayor Pro Tem?
And mine's just more informational for our citizens. I've gotten a lot of emails from many of you, and I appreciate that. One thing you need to be aware of is that we have forum rules, which means when you send it to every single one of us in one email, so you include all of us, not as BCC, but in the main, we are under a rule where we can't really answer you back to that because we may create a walking forum or a forum if we do so. So if you can BCC us where we can't see each other, where we can answer back or send them individually, that would help all of us because then we don't have that kind of possibility of creating a forum. So that's just my public service limits.
And that does matter because when it comes in as a "to somebody" and CC'd, we literally have to check, we have to basically run it through our legal town attorney in order to reply back. So it's not a free-for-all. It's, we can't just, hey, y'all, get it. It just can't be done. And I know we have people that have actually been on the council and sat in the committees, they know that, that are in the room. So it's not as easy as we all think it is just to hit the reply all button and hit everybody, so.
And I just realized I didn't have my microphone on, so I hope everybody could hear me if I was loud enough.
Mr. Wagenauer is celebrating his one-year anniversary today.
Yay!
We got lucky with the find with his 30 years, 30-plus years of experience. He has been a godsend to myself. He holds me accountable for many things that maybe I wouldn't have been held accountable for in the past. He's organized the administration, and he's put in place all of these, basically all the items that we wanted to accomplish here through the town. And so we are lucky to have you, and thank you for a great first year, and we look for many more to follow. Our National Night Out is scheduled for October 7th. I don't want to steal your thunder, so if you're going to talk about it, go for it. Our hazardous waste event will happen November 8th. It's a Saturday. We've done it in September before, but there was some challenges with getting it all together because there's some new ways that they have to handle hazardous materials that was different in the past. But as always, I think that's our biggest event of the year, and it'll be amazing. It'll also won't be as hot out there, so that should be good. So we'll be putting that into the Friday updates and splashing it on the website. And we've got the Double Oak Turkey Trot coming up on the 27th. If you haven't signed up, I don't know if they've closed out or not, or if they've got their max. Didn't they, didn't we allow them to up it a little bit this year?
Yeah, we added a few more allowances like for members, but I don't think they're closed yet. I hope not because I haven't signed up yet.
We signed up early.
You're not going. Nobody was there except for me last year.
So those are just some things I wanted to touch base on. So we'll go ahead and go to Public Works Code Enforcement.
A quick update on our crack sale program. It is complete. They have finished. Good news that it came in about $7,000 under budget, so currently... news that it came in about $7,000 under budget. So, currently working with Councilmember Pabaro to see if we can add a few streets to further keep our streets maintained. So, we're, I'm currently having my staff do a complete review of it to make sure that they did a good job and, and all that. So, I should be hearing back from them quickly. But, good news, it's always good when they come in under budget. So...
One thing I thought of is there's a couple earth holes opening up past, what is it, Simmons, right? I forget how far down there, but there's a couple good holes opening up.
There's a, there's a good-
On which road?
Kings. There's a good-sized one on Kings. We'll be filling that tomorrow morning.
Okay.
So, I'm surprised no one else had mentioned it. So, but no, we're aware of it. We'll be filling that tomorrow. Plus, there's a few other smaller potholes, but there's a pretty good-sized one that we're gonna take care of tomorrow.
Yeah, it's down to the dirt.
Yeah. Administration.
Administration.
All right. First, in the, in the spirit of transparency, one of the things I'm gonna start sharing with council is just a large number, at least from my perspective and my history of working in, in government, just a large number of open records requests that we receive. Whenever we get an open records request, it takes, it, even though they might seem simple on the, on the surface, it's really important that we take the due diligence to meet with our attorney to make sure that we are responding a hundred percent accurately with that. Over the past two months, I've received eleven open request, open records requests from a variety of residents. Estimated staff hours for that is roughly about twenty staff hours that we have put on it, either myself or Lynn. And a lot of that is going through old emails, pulling up, making sure. And then, the other side of this is coordinating with the attorney's office to make sure that we're in compliance from a, from a legal perspective, too. And with those eleven open records, we've closed ten of them, and our estimated attorney cost up-to-date is we've spent just on those eleven, about $1,100 above and beyond what we normally pay our attorney for those eleven. I just think it's important that we share the, the impact of staff and our budget with the large number requests that we're getting. Finally, I also wanted to share with council, as part of the budget process and part of our ongoing effort to streamline the administration and the budget, I just want to highlight that over the past few months, we have saved just under $20,000 in IT contracts that, upon our review, we have never used those services in the one year that I have been here. And so, looking at it and talking to staff, talking with our IT consultant for the need for that, we were able to cancel roughly just under $20,000 worth of IT contracts without having a significant impact to our, to our town.
Great work. Thank you. Yeah, I know, there's, there's still a lot we're digging out of from the past. So, I appreciate all the hard work that you and your team have put into it. Public Safety.
Okay, as you mentioned, Mayor, October 7th will be Texas National Night Out, always the first Tuesday in October for Texas. Officer Riojas and Officer Coronado are working diligently to get sponsors and to, and activities and things, so that that's in the planning stages, and we expect to be able to share more over the next few meetings. We hired a new school crossing guard, experienced. She has started and is doing well. That's a very difficult position to fill, just because of the nature of it, couple hours in the morning, couple hours in the afternoon, outside in the weather. But, she's experienced, and she's, she's doing well. Unfortunately, the police officer applicant that we had very high hopes for did not pass our background check. We came across a single body cam video that made us believe that he did not have the servant's heart that we're seeking. So, we, we took a pass on him, but we'll continue to look.
Thank you. Yeah, the, the crossing guard, I, she, I saw her out there on her first day, and I went over and introduced myself. We got lucky.
Yes, yeah.
She's, she, she's got a vast number of years of experience in doing what she does.
Right.
I think she works at another school, and then she comes over here, and then she flips flops back and forth.
Goes from elementary over to the, to the middle school. And I can tell you from experience, having supervised the crossing guards and school resource officers at another location, that that's a very difficult position to keep filled. So...
Super-nice lady. So, if you get a chance, stop by and say hello. Roads Committee.
Yeah, so as Chris mentioned, we were under budget, which is great. But, I wanted to make sure, because when we were driving all the roads earlier this year, there was some where you were kinda like, was the crack seal done right the first time? You weren't quite sure. So, that's why I really wanted Marshall to go out there and, and check and make sure. When it's under budget, you're a little nervous, like, nothing's ever under budget. Like, why is this happening? And so, once we get the answer for that, then we can kinda go back to our list that we had made from our meeting a few months ago, and then we can reevaluate and see if, you know, how we wanna work that out, or if we wanna put it in, back into the budget for something else, you know, as far as roads related or, or otherwise. So, but I'll be, if you guys have any recommendations on any roads that you're kinda worried about, I mean, obviously, those are big ones. It's not crack and seal stuff. So, you know, we can always put into something like that, too, where we maybe put more into potholes or something else. So...
And, and citizens, if you're, if you're on a street that you think needs some crack seal stuff done, shoot us an email up to the town hall, and we'll pass it on to the Roads Committee. So, we, your assistance would be greatly appreciated, and, and that'll give us an opportunity to, to make the right decisions. So... Anything else? Okay. Drainage Committee?
Drainage, we're still working on the meeting.
All right. Well, I've got, I have a list of three cross culverts for your first meeting.
Okay.
So, and one of them will be a little bit more expensive than the others because of how it intersects with neighboring driveways. But, it's one where we basically have the, according to, I wasn't here this weekend, but I guess we got a pretty good downpour of rain, and there, the water was probably running across, across timbers. It usually does. So, that's the one that I, we've identified right away that's gotta get done, and then there's two others. So, so I look forward to the meeting. All right. We're gonna go to item five, New Business Agenda. First on the list is item number twelve, Public Hearing to Receive Citizen Comments Regarding the Proposed Budget for the Fiscal Year 2025, 2026. Chris or Laura, did you want to say anything before we had opened the public hearing? I've got two people who signed up to speak in the public hearing tonight.
No, just, just want to share that we have complied with all the posted transparency requirements, both on our website, the newspaper, and with Denton County.
Okay. So, I'm gonna go ahead at 7:35. I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Whoops, I was only supposed to do that once. And Billy Garrett.
Billy Garrett, 103 West Caruth Lane. First of all, I want to say, as most of you know, sometimes it's hard to teach old dogs new tricks. And, but I also appreciate the efficiency and the new way you're trying to do things. But, I have questions on some of the line items. My first question, I don't know if we're doing the three-minute thing or whatever, because I don't know if I can do all this in three minutes. So, on the cover page on the website, where we're listing the proposed, where you're kinda doing a calculation of a median range of 723,240, and you're calculating out next year, the no-revenue rate, when you take it times the .171168, it calculates out to what you have on the website. But, if you take that 723,240 times the current tax rate that you're proposing to keep, it does not equal what's on the website. I did it, like, several times to make sure I wasn't miskeying something. So, please check that.
Yes, thank you.
Because that way, you're showing what that is. From there, I just have a cup, I have a few questions on the budget, on the line item. On the revenues, I would like to see what it is, I mean, what it does if we calculate it at the no-revenue rate. I mean, I know what you're doing now, is you're trying, you're proposing to leave it stagnant, to leave it steady. But, I think it's worth the view to, to put it out there, so that we can see in what adjustments we would have to make in other areas if you did push it back to the no-revenue rate.
Before you proceed, didn't we do that? If, if we didn't, we will.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's, that is not a problem.
I'd just, I'd like to see that. And then, I think really on the revenues, I didn't see a whole lot of questions. It's probably more on the expenses. I am presuming, Patrick, that the first column in the spreadsheet is the proposed budget for, or the budget, the actual fiscal budget for last year. Then, the middle column, or the second column, is the projection for the actuals, right?
Correct.
And then, okay, and then the variance is to the budget? Is the variance column budget to budget? I think it is, the way I calculated it out. Okay, all right. Okay. So, then, if you move over to expenses, that's kinda where I had the biggest problem, because you don't have an actual column on your expense spreadsheet. You just show two budgets. So, there's nothing that really tells the reader how you're potentially coming up with your budget column.
You want to address that, Chris?
Yeah, the expenditure is, is not showing the projection column. The, the challenge that we had with that was because this year, we consolidated a lot of the line items into one. It was-
But, you had to do it for your budget. So, you should have been able to do it for your ex-
What's that?
You had to do it for your budget, right? If you're not doing a one-for-one on your expenses, then you weren't doing a one-for-one on your budget for, for this current year. If you can list your budget, you should be able to list your expenses next to it.
Yes, but I, the budget was put together for next year's budget, of which we consolidated a lot of line items. So, yes, I, yes, I have a projection for this year, but-
I think that's, I think that's due to the public.
For this year to next year, it was just, it was easier to do it that way. But, yes, we do have a projection for this year.
But, I think, I think it's due to the public to see what our actuals are for this year, and what our projection is. Okay.
Yeah, what it, so part of that was-
I hear what, I mean, I hear what he's saying. I get it. But, if you can do a budget, you should also be able to present actuals.
Part of that was, is remember, because I know you, you experienced the same thing I did, is we have three lines up here, two lines down here, four lines up here, and nothing ever, never came together.
Right. No, I got it. I get it.
And when we're moving over to the Tyler, the new Tyler software with the government, with the GasBee stuff, it's the time to clean it up.
Right. No, I, I, like I said, I appreciate the efficiency and the new software, because, I mean, it's, I, I appreciate all of that. But, that's just, that would help me with my background and doing this previously, where you're coming, because some of these have some pretty big swings that, without seeing the actuals, it's kinda hard to know, where did you get from point A of this year's budget to next year's proposed budget, when I don't know what you're spending in the middle. If that makes sense to everybody.
Yeah, because I know one of those was, we had the IT spread out everywhere.
Right. And so, I mean, and just, I mean, and there's, I mean, notes. I mean, you can say this, I mean, which nobody, well, some people might go back on from last year's.
Billy, you're good. This is good. We, we've got, the, the numbers are there.
Yeah. No, I'm, I, I believe that. So, so, the IT services, that with a 210% jump, I'd just kinda like to understand what all, I'm presuming it's Statamax is doing, since Brian is no longer here, kinda what they're backfilling for us and what we're doing ourselves. The advertising under administration is jumping from a budget of $356 to $4,000. So, I don't know if there's something this year. I'd like to kinda understand that. I think, I know, we had a technology fund that's now zero in this year. So, just kinda trying to figure out. It'd be helpful just to know kinda where things are mixing and where we've pushed things. Under Public Works, we have $84,000 under the building inspections and permits. I know that's the COLAR contract. I know last year, we had that as we were gonna take that out of the general fund, which is why there's only $10,000 in the budget for last year.
Correct.
I would like to know if council or town administration did an analysis of, is it beneficial for us to hire an outside contract firm who does not work solely for Double Oak versus hiring someone to work for Double Oak? The biggest reason, you know, most recently, while P&amp;Z and the people who sit on P&amp;Z did a fabulous job, I think there was a couple of misses on a big thing that happened recently, that the contractor has, in my opinion, some answers, has to answer some questions as to, you know, we have a resident who now has a fence that stalled because it's potentially not meeting the ordinances, if that was approved by an outside contract firm. Where are the answers as to, you know, and would someone who was working solely for our town specifically have done a better job? I don't know whether they would or not. But, that's just something that I think that the town should explore, is someone that's working for us that knows our ordinances inside and out. I know they, you're working, Janet, you're working to update them, and that's great. But, I don't, you know, would that have gotten missed? You know, on things like that, the, the plot wits, just a whole lot of just little things. And I know you guys all know this. I'm not telling you anything that you don't already know. But, that's just one that sticks out to me is, you know, where, where's the background? What are we doing to do that cost analysis for ourselves? The street repairs, I'd like to understand how we spend, you know, why we're dropping that down to $50,000. Drainage, I think Mayor and Council, y'all owe us a lot of answers on the drainage meetings that we had. I mentioned that at the last meeting. Seems like there's consistently no report on the drainage. I know, Mike, you said that you're getting ready to have your first meeting. But, I know specifically for Caruth, you know, we asked for a lot of things, and we weren't even on the map. A lot of people didn't even know we have a river that runs through my backyard. Every time we, I'm sure it was on Saturday or whenever we got that rain, but I was in Kansas dealing with the river, you know, things up there. So, but, it's just disheartening that we had all those meetings, and there's been nothing to show for it. We spent $80,000 on a study that the citizens have really gotten nothing out of it, other than four meetings that now nothing else has come about it since then, and it's been a year, almost. So, I think that deserves answers. The employee insurance for the PD, and this might be easily explainable, but again, without the actuals, I don't know. But, the employee insurance on PD jumped 42%, but admin didn't jump in that same, same rationale. So, I'd like to understand that. Everybody needs insurance, so I don't have a problem with that. And then, under, this is still under the police, the other contractual services went from a $22,000 budget to $1,500. And then, the computer and miscellaneous supplies, which this could be combined somewhere else, went from a $21,000 budget down to $2,000. I don't know if this was just a miscue in last year's budget, where the judge was $10,100, and now it's $10,000. Are we missing the judge by $100? Or was that just, did, is the contract for the judge a flat $10,000 for the year? And then, lastly, the workers' comp on the fire department jumped by 212%. Just kinda like to understand. I know it's a lot of things, but just, those are just my notes from quickly going over some things that I'd just like to, I know we're not gonna beat up every line item, but I'd like to just understand some of the things that are, that have big swings, which everybody should want to understand the big swings. And the actual expenses would be helpful, especially for me, to understand it with my background. So, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. And we'll be talking about some of these when we go into our discussion. So, Ginger Britton.
Ginger Britton, 35, Kings Road. Billy touched on a few items that I also had briefly reviewed on the budget. I have some of the same concerns. First of all, under the contractual services for Public Works, your line item indicates building inspection and permits, anticipated budget for $84,000. I think perhaps the average person would not understand that that is a contract with an outside firm, and that that's not actual income coming in for the building inspection permits that are generated through the town. So, perhaps a clarification and a better explanation of what that's used for. Because currently, if the contractual service is $84,000, that's $7,000 a month for building inspections and permits. On your line item, your projected revenue to bring in for licensing permits of $58,000, that gives you a negative of $26,000. So, under this contract with this- So under this contract with this outside firm, can you explain or enhance or clarify what additional benefit we're getting from this contractor for the additional $26,000? This person's obviously not at the meetings to speak for anything that's going on with Public Works, Chris is doing that, so I think a clarification is needed and perhaps some, I don't know, copy of the contract, more detail about his certifications, qualifications, and what the role is for that particular company at $84,000 a year.
And just to clarify, you use the term of public, this is COLAR?
Yes.
Right.
I just use public firm. I'm sorry, I didn't understand your comment or question.
Well, Republic Works is our sanitation.
Public Works, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Period.
That's okay, so COLAR.
Yeah, so it's Steve COLAR, Marshall COLAR, whatever their company name is, I don't know exactly what they go by, if they have an LLC corporation or whatever. Also, my concern is, like with Billy's, on our street repairs, our budget last year was close to $130,000, we're dropping it down to $50,000. I don't know, have we decreased any of the streets that need to be improved, or have they magically been repaired by some street fairy so we don't need that much money anymore? Also, questions about the employee insurance, I know previously Chris mentioned that there's going to be several different choices of insurance plans, so you've estimated an 18% increase. Okay, so how many plans, how much variance will those particular plans hold? Some may remain the same, some may fluctuate depending on which plan the officer or the employee and their family and their spouse pick. So how do you come up with an 18% increase to figure into, again, Billy sent your actuals and your current projections for your calculations? Also, since you have lumped several of the items together, which I understand, to try to streamline this, believe me, I've been through this line by line on several occasions in my past, and it's a painful process, but it's something that has to be done. So I just want to clarify a few things that some of the residents may not know in looking at this, as we look at salaries and wages. Under our administration area, based on last year's 24-25 budget, our town administrator was at $111,000 for his salary. If we're giving a 2.2% increase, that would put him at $113,442. This isn't to the penny, this is just based on informations that I could find. Town secretary currently at $80,600, a 2 plus 2%, 2.2% increase puts it at $82,390. We currently have a new position of a town treasurer and a financial analyst. If the previous position was eliminated and that salary is substituted for this current position, that was at $69,800, 2.2% increase puts that at a $71,365. My other question is, you also have overtime allotted under this salaries and wages, overtime of almost $16,000. Which one of these, are any of these positions hourly? And this is why you have allowed overtime, and if so, which positions are hourly and would be qualified to receive overtime, which would be in addition to the 2.2% increase? Their hourly rate at overtime or time and a half, or however that's figured, would also up that percentage of what they receive in salary? Kind of along the same lines with our new police chief that's been here for a little bit, last year's salary was at $120,000, with a 3.2% increase puts him at $123,80. And then it was my understanding that also the chief receives a commuter allowance or gas expense, or however you want to title it, $500 monthly, which is an additional $6,000 a year, so that puts total almost at $130,000 a year for our police chief. That's not disclosed in any of these line items, so I just want to make sure the residents are aware of where some of their dollars are going in a more specific area. I had a couple other things, bear with me here. Also, as Billy mentioned, under contractual services, other contractual services, we had a line item of $22,000, is now we're down to $1,500. What we're, when is that? Computer and miscellaneous supplies, again, close to $21,000, we're down to $2,000. What, when were you using that money? It was also mentioned, there is a line item fixed causes, cost, transfer to equipment replacement of a line item of $83,960. What is that? Where is it going? What's it used for? That's a pretty big number, I think that needs to be looked at. Then also, on the front page of this printout are the attachment here, we talk about instituted vehicle replacement fund for three patrol cars. Chief, I don't know where you have that line item started or indicated in your budget here, if that's something that you've discussed, that's been agreed to. I have something here that talks about, I'm sorry, it escapes me, I cannot locate it at the moment. Is that the transfer to equipment replacement, or?
Chris, can you answer that?
Yeah, that's, that's the money that we set aside to, as council discussed during the workshop, for developing the equipment replacement schedule for the three patrol vehicles.
Okay. Again, just a suggestion, transfer to equipment, to equipment replacement doesn't clearly indicate to me anything related to starting a vehicle replacement fund for three patrol cars. So perhaps call things apples to apples, if it's going to be used to replace, you know, patrol cars, as we all need, have to be replaced, idle time, engine time, all this other kind of wear and tear, maybe it'd make more sense for the common person, if they read this, to see that that's exactly what those dollars are being used for. And then also expenditures, and we've talked about this in previous meetings, convert police officer to step plan. Whenever that is implemented, I think it would be helpful to note where you're deriving your information from. I'm sure there's several plans out there for police officers and to use to formulate this type of program.
Right, we do, we do an annual salary study.
Right. So, once this is established, I think we'd like to see, or I would like to see, each one of those steps, what the marketing values are, you know, from point A to point B, this is your beginning place, your next promotion would be from point A to next point. I would like to see that, you know, posted or given information out, once it's implemented, do we have a timeframe of when that's going to be implemented, before the budget's approved or afterwards, or?
Well, it can't be implemented before the budget's approved.
Well, I'm just saying, what is your projected timeframe to get this?
If the budget is approved with the step plan in it, then it will be implemented on October 1st.
Okay, so you already have the information gathered, it's in place and ready to go, to pull the trigger?
Yeah, it was, it was, we went over extensively in the budget workshop.
Okay, alright. I think one more thing, and then you'll be done with me. Again, with consolidating all the IT costs, I'm with Billy, I'd like to see a little more information about where that money's going to, how it's going to be used as far as contracts, Datamax, you know, are we paying Daily Max extra now to do the YouTube videoing, since we don't have a person any longer, those things like that. I think we need a little more of an additional information about that fund. And then also, just one last comment, since we have a town treasurer slash financial analyst, is it safe to assume that now the town will be receiving more dashboards, more financial forecasting, more quarterly reporting, reconciliation of all the budget information published in a timely manner and itemized, even though line by line is painful, the citizens, and I would like to see a little more detail on a regular basis from the city?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I had a question, Ginger, one missing. You talked about fixed costs, I couldn't find which one you were talking about, because there's fixed costs under several items, which one were you talking about? So I was trying to take notes as you were talking. Was it under administration, or was it under Public Works, or was it under police?
I believe it's police.
Believe it was.
Yeah, there's one under police.
Liability insurance, vehicle insurance, and transfer to equipment replacement?
Yes, under fixed cost, line item three, transfer to equipment replacement, $83,960.
Right.
And that was where I'd ask for clarification of what that expenditure was for, and if it is for the replacement or to start the fund for replacement of vehicles, I would like to see that line item titled differently so it'd be readily recognizable.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right thing, or taking the right notes.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Alright, it is now 7:58.
Can I, is this still open, we have to sign in? Can I say?
Up. It's a public, I'm going to let, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Linda Blush from 110 Tanglewood, and I was here at the budget workshop meeting.
Correct, and that's why I'm inviting you up.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that, because I took notes on that particular day, that morning we had, and I was assured that we would have this as a process, and it was, you know, going to take further steps, of course, I guess it is, because everything that was discussed by, I think it's Billy and Ginger, were part of my questions that I had that day, being a person, a layperson who doesn't really know all the verbiage. So I just wanted to reiterate that we ended by me saying drainage. We, and my response from the council at that time was like, we'll get to that, we'll get to that. So I'm just, what I'm doing is I'm not going to go back over everything they just said because I have the same, same questions on the budget. So those drainage questions and all those questions that we had will be addressed onward? Like the meeting's not, the budget's not going to be approved today?
No. In fact, that's the next session, is we'll start to discuss all these items.
Okay, so I just want a clarification on that, because my questions were the same questions.
And Linda, the fact that you were here that Saturday?
Yes, sir.
Nobody wants to come spend their Saturdays.
[laughing]
Very much appreciate that, and so even though we had a point of order.
I understand, and I thank, I thank you for that, I didn't know I was going to have anything to say.
It's alright, well, I thank you for being there, and I thank you for being here, and I thank the other two speakers as well, so. It is now eight o'clock, the public hearing is now closed, I'll do one time. And we're going to move on to item 13, now this is discussion on the proposed fiscal 2024, 2020, 2025, 2026 budget, and this will be by Chris and the council. And we're, I think everybody was frantically taking notes, so we're going to try and hit as many as we can, some of it may not, we'll have the, this will be on the next agenda item as well, because we have to follow the process, and we'll get as many of these things as addressed between now and then, and get them posted on the website. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris.
I'll do my best to answer as many of those as I can. Go ahead.
Do you guys have some notes that you wrote down that you could share with us? If you could leave those after the meeting, I think that would really help us, so we can go in and tackle them right away. Thank you. So go ahead, Chris.
First, I just want to make sure, because one of the residents had mentioned a 2.2% increase, that is not what is put in here for the cost of living increase. The 2.2 more related to the police step plan idea that we had, the cost of living increase for all the employees is a 3.5% increase per, per the direction that I received from council, so I just wanted to make sure that, that that was clear. As it relates to the contracts, yes...
Applies for all people, for both police officers and administration.
And administration, yes.
Okay.
It's for everybody. In terms of the contracts, yes, there was a lot of cleanup. The big one that kind of, that sticks out is the other contractual services in police. One of the things I hate is having a line item with a lot of money in it that says "other," because to me, we need to, we need to spell that out, that's why that other contractual services went from 22 to 1,500. If you look right above it, we pulled out the dispatch services and software license and those things out of that account, because again, one of the things that I try to do when putting a budget together is try not to have a large dollar amount of miscellaneous or other, that's just a pet peeve that I have. So the first year you do it, it makes it kind of hard to read and, and the money gets, moves it around, but after this year, it should be much, much more cleaner to compare apples with oranges, I guess, or apples to apples. There was also a lot of discussion, was to make sure we are totally clear on the, on the COLAR contract going from $10,000 to $84,000. Again, remember that $10,000 is what we started the budget year with, but we also started with a salary and benefits of an employee of $101,000, so that $101,000 is actually going down to zero, and the COLAR, the building inspection of permits is going from 10 to 84, which when you include not only the salaries and benefits, but the training costs, the, all the ancillary costs that went on when we had a full-time position, we're actually saving anywhere from $30,000 to $40,000 a year by going from a full-time staff person to the, to the COLAR contract. Let me just finish, because there's also a comment that was made, what are we getting for that contract? The majority of that 84, $64,000 of that contract is for permitting services, to go out there, to do the inspections, to process the permits, to do the administrative side of it, and making sure that the permits are done correctly. There's another $20,000 that is in that contract to do the maintenance work, what I call the public works maintenance, so that is the, when we're saying, oh, Marshall's going to go fill a pothole, or Marshall's going to do that, that's part of that $84,000 contract. So we're not just spending $84,000 simply on permits and fees, it's closer to the low 60s for that. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. With that, also, I am, and I constantly do, get quotes and bids from outside people. I have already talked to a company who provides outside permitting services, because one of my things, I always like to make sure we get in the best bang for our buck. I do not want to just assume that because we're getting a good deal, that there's not a better deal out there, or, or can I get a better deal for the same amount of money? So I am constantly researching, interviewing companies out there who can provide these services to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck.
And an example of that is, we had a conference call with a prospective vendor, what day was it?
It was last week.
Last week.
We actually met with them twice, so it's, again, it's important to, that you know that just because we do have a contract doesn't mean that we're all good. I'm constantly looking at options that we can breed in people, and plus, what that does too, is that holds our current contractor accountable to make sure if he comes to me with, hey, I need to increase my fees or whatever, I know in my head pocket if he's blowing smoke or not, because I've gone out there and done the due diligence to make sure that we're, we're getting the best bang for our buck with that. The current COLAR contract does go through December, so that's something that will be taken a much closer look at, to make sure that we are, again, getting the best bang for a buck, and that we are getting good quality service for the money that we're spending. So I just wanted to spend a few minutes with that as well.
We're also looking at a few of our other, what I would call longtime vendors, to ensure that we're doing exactly the same thing, that we're getting the best we can get, and make sure that we're getting accuracy as well.
Yeah, so that's why earlier in the, in the meeting, I announced that we were able to shave off a few contracts, because I just found out we were not using them. So why are we paying $10,000, $20,000 on contracts that we're not even using? To me, that doesn't make sense to do so. The other example, for example, is our website, I mean, we just did a new website, we went a different direction. The cost of our website with Civic Plus was just about going to double. was just about gonna double. Because that's what Civic Plus does. Plus, we were paying on top of that money for our ADA requirements and other things. So we were able to do that cheaper and at least in my opinion, especially when we get done after the first few months or working out the tweaks.
Correct.
I just think it's gonna be cheaper and better in the long run. So again, it's not perfect. We know it's not perfect. We know that there's been a few issues. We're working through those issues with the website on a daily basis. But I'm confident that once we get through those, we will have a, a nice website at a fraction of the costs that we were paying before. So those are just a few examples. Again, the, the, oh, I'm looking at the wrong, boy, I'm sorry. The transfer to equipment replacement, again, that's an accounting term, quite honestly. Technically, that money is gonna be, it's paid out of what I call the general fund or the operating fund. But the equipment replacement fund is, is actually an internal service fund or a, or an enterprise fund. So basically, that's just the mechanism to move it. Each month, we'll take one twelfth of that number and move it into the correct fund, which is outside of the operational account. That's more of an accounting term that we used. But that's kind of why it looks, has that, has that funky title.
But can we, can we make reference to maybe a parentheses or something is what it's for?
Sure.
Okay.
No problem. And I hope I got most of them. If I missed any, please let me know. But I know those were the big ones.
Well, and I think one of the differences here is you put it in here. Before, we used to do kind of the opposite, is we'd have it over in our other fund and move it later. I have it on this time. I think I have it on this time. Shows a button on. So that's a difference in the accounting that I also questioned at one point of, we're actually doing it the correct way that our auditor suggested now.
Correct.
Instead of doing it the wrong way, which is just having it over there and then pulling it over. So we're actually showing it in the budget this time.
Yeah. One other thing, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention because the, the word drainage and streets came up a lot. I just wanted to make sure that was discussed at our last council meeting, to where, again, we have a significant reserve account, that my recommendation to council is going to be identifying certain amount of money in our operational reserve to transfer over into drainage and streets. But that would be done at a later time.
Right. Because what is in the budget right now is essentially the day-to-day upkeep that we're gonna spend on the streets, the potholes on King's Road.
Exactly. Or to cover an emergency, for example, if we have, something happens and we have to get a contract that are out there on an emergency basis. There's money in the budget to cover those things. But the, the big mail and overlay projects, any large drainage projects.
Right.
As was discussed, and as the council has historically done, they have taken that out of designated reserve account. And that'll be discussed at a later meeting.
Right. And that's, we'll be taking those recommendations from the committees. But there are a couple of cross-covert things that we've got to get addressed from a drainage perspective right away. But that's, again, as you just said, it's not necessarily in the budget. It's gonna come from.
One of the things that I think that we, we didn't get to as part of the budget workshop, we talked about the Berman's fees. But I wanted to just go on record and highlight that the open records requests are increasing Berman's fees. That's just two months and that's eleven hundred more. The ordinance work, I think, is gonna also go up.
Be significant.
So we need to possibly think about upping that.
I actually upped his contract within this budget by about ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Mainly because I knew a lot of the ordinance were gonna be coming down.
Yeah.
And with the large amount of open records requests.
And then the, the other thing that we, I think for the citizens, like a lot of, lot of that, I think it's just the scary number of the IT cost increase. When in actuality, the total of what we spent last year or this year versus what we're gonna spend next year has gone down. So it'd be good to get that mapping. I think, because I know it came from thirty other places to get all of it together. Because I remember last year wanting to pull my hair out with how many IT costs were everywhere. So great work on that. But I think, like, showing the mapping of where it went, came from into the IT costs, I think.
We'll do the same thing with the, because the longevity, the insurance, it all wrapped into the
Yeah, the insurance, the longevity, yeah, it's all.
I mean, it was a convo, you know, it was very difficult.
Yeah.
But, you know, but as far as, we'll make sure that we get the mapping done on that.
And you already had that for the, for the software anyway, the mapping that went through. But, and then just for citizens, the, in the workshop, and there was published the proposed step plan for the police department that we approved. So just in case you want to go back to the, the step plan and the price increases, it's, it's available. It was published.
I have another one also. So the other one that was in here was the workman's comp. And I also, in the budget workshop, asked that question. And previously, here's what I know from previously, we never had a real number. We always overspent the number that was budgeted. This time, Chris tells me that he actually has the insurance number. Before the, before we ever budgeted, we actually have the cost from the insurance. So we know this is the number this time. So we should not overspend this time. Where in the past, we never got it until months after we'd approved a budget, and then we always overspent. And that drove me crazy every year.
I appreciate that, but me being able to see the actuals, I might not have ever asked that question.
Yeah.
I asked that question before too, though, because seeing that increase made me go, wait a minute.
And, yeah. And I don't, I'm not gonna get in trouble with the volunteer fire department, but there were claims that they did. And I'll just
I want to cover, obviously.
Yeah.
But without seeing the actuals, I'm trying to understand.
Yep.
Can I just ask, Chris, like, some, I guess, what do you think kind of questions? But there's two of them. So you only were working with Randall for a little while, right? Maybe like a month or two before he left. How do you like the new situation? Do you think it is better third-partying it out? Or, I just want your honest, you know, what you think like the pros and cons are of having someone in-house as opposed to, and we know the money, obviously, it saves a lot of money. But have you noticed any real big differences in having Marshall as opposed to having Randall?
Well, there, as you said, there's pros and, there's pros and cons to it. I like, I believe in a smaller city with the resources tight, that you would try to contract out as much as you possibly can, primarily because our benefit, our benefit costs are uncertain each year, especially employee insurance and those things. And so we, if we can contract out, I am all for that, primarily because it's, you're getting a set cost. And I think I can hold people accountable by, by making sure, by interviewing companies out there to make sure, hey, are we getting a good product at a good price?
Yeah.
And if we're not, with a contract, you can get a thirty, sixty day out and bring somebody else in. Versus if you have an employee, separating that employee can be a challenge, let's put it that way.
Yeah. So in general, you feel like it's, because I know a lot more is falling on you to do maybe some day-to-day stuff as well. So you, in general, still like the situation of Marshall or whoever, you're pretty happy with
I prefer doing the contracted out. Forget about who it is, being just contracted out in general.
Yeah.
To me, for this size city, that makes the most sense.
Yeah. And then I guess, so we kind of see it more with that situation, the money, exactly. So how is it working out with now the IT side? Was there an increase to data? I can't remember us discussing what, like, by getting, you know.
The data max contract was basically a rollover from last year, the day-to-day services that, that they provide.
Yeah. So it didn't go up then, when we lost an employee for that?
No, it did not go up. In fact, once we had made the decision to go a hundred percent contract, they have actually been great to work for and with. There's been things they could have charged us for that they haven't. But, and that's because we have developed a strong working relationship with them. They want to help us as much as possible. Probably the biggest impact that we've had by doing that has been in the police side of things. And so it's, it's caused a little bit more impact with, with Dan's staff. But fortunately, I think we've kind of worked out kind of the transition and things seem to be working pretty smooth now.
Okay. I just want to make sure, kind of clear it up. Okay, so this is, this is exactly what it looks like. And, you know, coming from you, you're the one that has to be the administrator of all of it. So, yeah, if you don't contract it out or whatever, you're doing the work.
Personally, I like contracts versus people, if I can, especially for services that are more technical in nature. It just gives you a little bit more stability. It's more work on me, yes, because I have to oversee those contracts to make sure they're doing what they say they're gonna be doing. But to me, I think we get our best bang for our buck as a town by contracting out those services.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Patrick, can I just ask another question about the COLAR contract? I have more of a statement from a citizen's perspective. If Randall used to drive the town multiple times.
Go ahead and come up, just so we can, and we're, we're, we want to follow our hard and fast rules and our ordinances and such. But at times, we're going to go ahead and listen and have that conversation, especially when it comes to the budget. So.
I think one of the things that I liked a lot about having Randall or whoever, an employee, and someone who works specifically for us, is the fact that he drove the streets. He would see if people were doing work on their house. Unfortunately, I mean, at one of the most recent meetings, Chris said that, you know, he'd heard from a couple of citizens about things that maybe they should go look at. I don't think citizens should have to tattle on other citizens. That's what causes fighting sometimes, is, and we got enough of that. We got enough drama going on. We don't need any more drama. But who's driving the town to see if so-and-so down the street is laying a driveway that needs a permit that probably didn't have a permit?
So, yeah, Marshall is, Marshall is doing that.
Okay. Because I used to see Randall all the time. I've never seen Marshall.
Yeah, that, okay, there's, there's a different side of that. Marshall isn't always using the public works truck.
Okay. All right. Well, that would be, I mean, you know, if he's driving the town, I mean, I know that he puts wear and tear on the, on the truck. But it'd just be nice to know that somebody's checking those things. And citizens, neighbors should not have to tattle on neighbors.
He is driving, Marshall is driving the town. So, other questions, council? So, and you, you're both gonna, Ginger and Billy, you're gonna share your lists. Because we're trying to hit them all tonight. I don't know if we will. We may have to, we'll, we'll get them posted back onto the website with the changes and stuff. What else, council? So before we close up this item, I want to give you all a little bit of our future. The Texas House and the Texas Senate on Friday, both put bills up that basically takes all town increases. Now, today, there's a three-point-five percent increase that a town can have in its expenditure budget, that they can go up to through all the calculations with no new revenue rate and current voter rates and all those things. Okay? And so, for example, the voter appro, so the no new revenue rate was one-point-two million. The current rate that we're talking about this year is one-point-three million, which is point-one-seven-eight-eight-eight, which keeps things the same as last year. The voter approval rate, which would have been max rate, would have taken it to one-point-four million. If the Texas legislature does what they could do over the next two weeks, our town will no longer be in a position to sit and have meetings like this, because we'll only be able to work off of one percent of an increase for any expenditures. And any revenues on top of what we would budget for would have to go into a fund. And the only way those monies could be spent in the future is for our town to have a special election. Our special elections run us about ten to twelve thousand dollars. So if the Texas legislature gets their way, and I hate to say, I think they're gonna get it, and they put this one percent cap on, you'll see Double Oak have to have multiple elections in a, in one year in order to spend the money we need to spend on drainage, roads, and whatever, because we can't build it into the budget. Essentially, the funds will sit there, and we'll have to go to a special election. So think about it. We'll have to spend twelve thousand dollars to spend twenty-five thousand dollars on drainage. I would say that you want to get a hold of Mitch Little, you want to get a hold of Tan Parker. We're, this will be in the Friday update. We'll get it out there. This is not good for us, a community the size of Double Oak with our budget. If we were to do one percent every year, and you know what the first thing that gets hit? What do you think it's gonna be? It's our public services. Because we can only work within a one percent. All right? We have a luxury. We've got our nice fund balances and all those things. And we're gonna work those out in terms of getting some capital projects done in the, in the town and still be fiscally conservative. But if the state does what they're gonna do, and they, and it came out again today, one increase, one percent increase for your town budget. Billy, how many budgets did you do? And how many did you do for one percent? It's really, really scary, what's coming at us. As, as we've said in a lot of the correspondences I put out on Friday updates and even in the cross-timbers, the state wants to take control of small-town government because they think they can do it better. So we are working our tails off as a council, as an administrative staff, in order to get the right thing done for the town. All your questions, absolutely, we will answer those and we will get you the information because there's nothing to hide here. I'm proud of the work that they've done. But to sit down and do this next year is gonna be a whole different thing if we're stuck to one percent. So.
What do I call it, the bill?
It is Senate Bill Ten and Legislative Bill, oh my gosh.
Here.
SB Ten is the
That's the main one.
Senate Bill Ten, one-zero?
One-zero. Please go out and take a look at. This has just happened in the last, since last Friday and through today. The special session is a scary thing for our state. You know, they've been playing, oh my gosh, redistrict, and it's been hemp, and let's make sure we get the funds which were needed to do the emergency sirens and services down in the valley where they had all the issues. But alongside, when they're there, they kind of do this other work. And because it's in the summer, not everybody pays attention to it. And it gets really, really scary. Now Mitch Little came out and was quoted, Mitch represents our, our district, and basically said that what they're trying to do is not good for local government. And what they think they're gonna save on everybody's taxes is gonna be enough to go to Starbucks. So he's working for us. Tan Parker's working for us. But our state legislature, this one's gonna get ugly. And this isn't just apply to us. Louisville, Flower Mound, think about those ones. So hopefully, it'll die somewhere in the next two weeks. But I'd rather at least bring it up now because it's been blown into our emails. So anyway, I just, into the future, because what we're gonna be working on after we get this budget done, we're now going, we were gonna go out and do a projected five-year plan for the town. We're still gonna do that. It just might get scary that it's one percent. So with that said, shall we move on to the
Clarification? Was that, you said it was SB Ten?
Yeah, SB Ten.
Right. I was wondering, Senate Bill Ten was for something other than
Okay. Well, I'm
You have, you have to look in the special legislative session.
Oh, yes.
You can't just look, because there's, the other one just finished. We actually have another one. So it's a second session you have to look in.
Yeah.
It's very confusing when you go look for it.
It's extremely confusing.
[laughing]
Yes. All right. Anything else on the budget, council? All right, we'll make these changes. We'll get them back posted. So we're gonna move on to item fourteen, discuss, consider, and act on the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six contract with Flower Mound for emergency services. Chris? Oops, that's not it.
Yeah, this is just our ongoing contract with Flower Mound. As most of you know, it has been an escalating contract over the last few years. This gets us to the, to the top level. And so it is a significant increase going from, from, I believe, like eighty-four up to one-twenty or something like that. Got a lot of numbers in my head right now. So, but it is, it was a negotiated or had agreed upon, slow tick up to make sure that we are paying a, a fair rate to Flower Mound. I guess in the past, we were getting the, the deal beyond all deals.
Deal of the century.
I guess in the past, we were getting the, the deal beyond all deals, and it's, it's finally caught up with us, but this would be a, a contract with Flower Mound for the upcoming year for $120,000. I, I did do a quick check with Flower Mound to see the level of service that we are getting. On an average, they average about 100 runs per year to, to provide service for our residents.
And obviously, this is something we agreed to three years ago, so this is just a formality. We'll be sitting down with Flower Mound EMS and having a better understanding now of what the rates will be moving forward, so we're not having big jumps. And I think it was a previous council that was there when they saw what they brought in, and everybody's mouths kind of hit the, hit the dais, and so this is really just the formality we do at this time every year. We'll be doing the same thing with our Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department at our next meeting, which we do every year on that date. We have, even at 120 sounds like a lot in what we pay for our Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department, we have a hell of a deal in Double Oak for our emergency services and the type of service we get. So we feel lucky and we'll, we'll, we will work hard at making sure they sharpen their pencil enough so that we have a, a good rate moving forward as well. So council, do you have questions for Chris or myself?
Oh. I have a quick question. Just wondering if someone does get EMS services, do they get charged as well like the citizen does? Or no? Like, meaning, like, let's say you have a heart attack or something, and they got to come to your house. Do you, does EMS...
It, it all would depend upon the type of service that they provide, like, if they would care flight you, or your ambulance service is only paid to X.
Yeah.
No, they go to, they try insurance, they, they work to get everything through insurance first.
But if they don't, they give it up pretty quick.
That is correct.
Oh, yeah.
So they, if they, they don't get a quick response from insurance, they give it up pretty quick, and they eat the cost.
Oh, really? Okay. That's what's kind, because I was looking at, 100 runs, it's like $1,000 every time someone calls it.
It's pretty substantial what they, now, obviously, you know, working out with the numbers, but more importantly, the, the numbers are one thing, but the service we get is the other.
Yeah.
The combination of, of Flower Mound EMS, if, it's this, the fire station right down the street here, and then if you're out in West Double Oak, they, they come out of Shiloh, and they're basically there at every call, and they work great with our Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department, so...
I've had them probably at our house twice, and maybe three times in the past two years. Never once did they pursue the insurance.
Oh, past the insurance, any? Yeah.
Right.
Well, they didn't, they didn't ask for a number, they didn't ask for anything.
Oh, really?
So they just ate the cost. And, and what they did was very minor.
Yeah.
But they're still not charging insurance for those calls.
Yeah. Okay. So that's kind of, I mean, that's what I'm kind of trying to figure out, is it, are they getting, like, more from others whenever they come out now? Pretty much not.
No, I mean, it's, yeah, they're...
Only when they have to take you to the hospital.
Correct. And, and they, they purchased a new ambulance, which is covering now the west part, not, not on our, us, it's just they invested in their infrastructure, so, but yes, we'll be sitting down with them literally probably in October, so we can get moving on it. It's not going to be an overnight situation.
It seems like at this rate of 100, that's about how many they had when you first, when the contract was first put in place. So we haven't really gone up in the number of calls here.
No, we, we don't.
It's pretty consistent. Yeah, let's, yeah, not going with it on that one.
So we'd like them to go down.
It's a good, it's a good talking point in the meetings that you might have with them, like, hey, you know, we have more houses or whatever it is, but not necessarily more calls, so, you know, maybe we don't need to go up that much.
Well, when we sit down and go through the, the, the contract negotiation, we will have them come over and present.
Okay.
So it'll be a part of, it'll be a part of negotiation.
But is that, that's not a town council thing, is it?
We'll have them come to the town council and present.
Oh, great. Okay. Perfect.
Okay. Without, any further discussion? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve the agreement with the town of Flower Mound to provide emergency medical services in an annual amount of $120,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Robertson and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Wellen. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Dr. K?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
Mr. Wortney?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
All right, the item passes. Thank you, council. Moving on to 15, discuss, consider, and act on the purchase of four replacement laptops from Datamax. Presentation by Chris Loggernauer, and I think Mark, you said it was a really good deal?
Yeah, it appeared to be. I like, Chris, you'll talk about, the other question I had, and I sent it an email, but, so their files are stored basically on the server, right? There's really no saving of stuff on the drive itself.
Yeah, that, that's why we could go with a, a smaller drive and save some money that way, because of all the, the cloud services that we use and all those things, yeah.
Yeah, and they're, they're not crunching AI stuff and all the other stuff on them, so they can get away with...
These will be plenty fast for the, the work we do on, on the laptop. I mean, our current laptops are five years old. I, I took mine to a conference a couple of weeks ago, I charged it the whole night and turned it on, it lasted to be about 30 minutes, so they're, they're due to be replaced.
Correct.
Yeah, that was the only thing that I had.
We are getting a great price with, working directly through Dell, they do give us a nice discount, so we get some nice computers at a, at a good price.
Yeah, yeah, and with your requirements, that's, that helps with the price, too.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the only thing that I had.
Five years is good useful life.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they're gone.
Okay. Any other discussion, council?
Just in the, in the description, it says four laptops, in the recommended action, it says three laptops. It's four, though, right?
It, it is four, that was my mistake, yeah.
Okay, yeah, just to make sure.
And the price is for the four and not the three? Just double checking. Okay.
All right. Council, we have a motion.
I move to approve the spending of the $5,438.20 budgeted for the four Dell laptops.
My second.
Okay. You guys are getting quick. We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Dietrich and a second by Councilperson Favaro. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
Mr. Wortney?
Aye.
And Dr. K?
Aye.
All right. Item passes. Thank you.
Great. I'm sorry, just one quick thing, I, I did get an email from our Dell rep today that the actual price is actually going to be a couple hundred bucks cheaper, so he, he sharpened his pencil a little bit, and so we'll, we'll take it, but it's one on the, on the record, just to let everybody know.
Very good. Good job. Thank you.
Now he can spend that 200 bucks somewhere else.
So we will, we, we expect to have cleanup on the budget tonight, that's, that, the budget's never final until it goes final on the, what's our next meeting date, the 8/15? So we will get these changes, and Billy and, and Ginger, if you can drop off your sheet so we can double-check them, make sure we get all that stuff handled, and then I know Pat took some notes as well, I've got some notes, so we want to do the best we can to get it all handled and taken care of, and then we'll get it published, so...
I have one last thing. For the next meeting, I'll have to dial in from Paris, so I'll be seven hours ahead of you at 7:00 PM.
We have in two of you...
Okay, just double checking that you guys...
Yes, we will, we will be doing it via Teams, so...
Thank you.
The, two of our council people, the meeting will be here.
You guys come to Paris with me, right? At 4:00 AM?
So, it is now 8:36, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Appreciate everybody being here.